Right, it's being past the affair time of seven thirty, we'll call this meeting to order. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NorCam and may be recorded by other local media. Please join me in standing for the pledge of leaders. The pledge of leaders.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Marr, Catherine Marr, to the board. We put you in the center, you are the rose between the other thorns here, so I'll put you right there because it's deliberate and intentional on my part.
Okay, thank you.
So you're in the center of attention right now, and we wish you the best of luck as far as your tenure on the board, and I hope your tolerance level is high. So good evening. And of course, welcoming back Mr. Wallner, congratulations on your reelection, well deserved, and look forward to your insight and your enthusiasm for the next three years. And community has been well served by you, and look forward to the next three years.
Thank you.
That'd be great. I think you're gonna have a good year ahead. Also like to just acknowledge to Mr. Gilberto and his wife and family, the loss of his father-in-law over the last couple of few days ago. I know you had to scoot out over the weekend and head down to New Jersey, and our condolences to you and Jen, and the loss of your father-in-law, and our prayers and thoughts are with you. And thank you for tending to business while you had more important business to tend to, and again, our condolences. Also, to my board members and other members of the community who have heard, my sister passed away Saturday afternoon. I just wanted to say that thank you for your thoughts, your prayers, your offices of support. And as far as my sister was concerned, you know, it's interesting, you don't get to pick your relatives, you get to pick your friends, and I got lucky in two counts here. And remarkable woman, again, lived in this community for a number of years, she moved here with my parents in nineteen fifty-one, and then spent her youthful years here, then got married. She had four children of her own, then married a widower with six, so at the age of thirty, she had ten children under the age of thirteen, and she was a little bit busy. While at the same time, you know, being a nurse, running a Salem V and A, Greater Newbury Port V and A, and raising her family in North Andover for a while. And then after her family kids grew old and moved out, she downsized and moved back to North Reading, her hometown, and lived here for a number of years, worked the polls for the town. About seven years moved to, she contracted Parkinson's disease, and then moved up to Brightview in North Andover, back to North Andover where she raised her family for about eight years ago. But wonderful person, and truly a delight, and so fortunate and blessed, and we're gonna miss. But again, for everybody, I'm expressing your sympathies and thoughts greatly appreciated. Now, with that, what do we have? Meeting minutes, what do we have? Mrs. Marr, as we drew the short straw this year instead of Mr. Massey, she's now the clerk, quick indoctrination to making the motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the main phase of twenty twenty five meeting.
Second, second by Mr. Wallner, any discussion? Hearing and, we don't need roll call because everybody's here, so correct, right? So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous. Mrs. Marr. Is it, so you forget that, anything else here, still the other one? May seventh?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the May seventh, twenty twenty five minutes.
Second, second by Mr. Wallner, any discussion? None, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, for the May fifth, was it five to zero, or was there an abstention?
There was an abstention.
I was an abstentionist.
Okay, thank you. Board member reports. Mr. Massey.
Sure, just have a couple things to bring up. One question actually is for the clickers that we'll be using at town meeting. Is there any opportunity or any way that we can test these clickers with witness of the registrars or the police department? You know, just to make sure that, hey, if we wanna get fifteen yeses and five nos to a certain question, that we do get fifteen yeses and five nos?
As far as, the town clerk intends on doing a couple of dry runs, I believe, a town meeting, you know, right at town meeting, let people know how it works. There are leniency, everybody's just gonna get one clicker, and there's gonna be a methodology to collect them back, so everyone can have two clickers. And then, so there'll be some dry runs that have people try it, see how it works. I believe there's also going to be on the board a tally of what it is, is that true?
Yep, so through you, Mr. Chairman, there will be a, so there'll be a test that will happen in advance of the town meeting as well amongst a few folks who will be charged with overseeing the implementation. But then there will be a larger test that will happen the night of town meeting, so we'll ask the moderator, so what's your favorite flavor of ice cream? People click, and it'll tally a vote. There'll be a display that will happen on the main screen, there'll be a dual feed that will happen. So as everybody, I think, knows at this point, the clicker is run by radio frequency, not by internet. They communicate with the central station that will be in the room, that will go to the laptop, which will display up separately from the PowerPoint presentation, so people can see the results on there, up on the screen. So there will be a test, and it'll be actually an active test with people actually participating in it, so that we don't have any issues. We did talk about the possibility of moving to have all of the votes taken by clicker, you know, from start to finish, so to speak. I talked to the moderator briefly about that. I think his sense is for the very routine votes that are not controversial in any way to go with a voice vote, but for anything where there might be a question to go with the clickers. And then, of course, there's a capability for those in Florida to request the clickers under the town bylaw. So that was the thinking at this point.
Would there be any vendor there, or have we already received training?
No, the vendor is actually responsible for the first town meeting, so, and that was very important to all of us, and it was sort of, we talked, we were rushing for the January meeting and decided that it made more sense to just have a bit of a, more of a running start for the annual town meeting, and the vendor will be there.
Thank you. Last but not least is the Memorial Day ceremony held next Monday. If everyone can make it, I believe that starts at ten a.m., followed by a parade, the select board walks in, so for Ms. Marin, you are invited. I don't know if you received an email to walk into the Memorial Day parade, but you might wanna book that morning.
Wear some comfortable shoes.
And then that's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Studo.
Um, I just have, welcome, Chris Perrin.
Thank you.
Um, and now, because I, you know, I said I didn't wanna jinx or anything, congratulations, Mr. Wallner, you say that, um, and I have nothing else.
Other than, you could have a little more for your time, and you're looking forward to that?
I'm just, yeah, just a bit, just a bit. I mean, I only got back like five to ten hours a week, so I don't know what to do with it. It's already been taken up, but, you know, at least it's not in this building, so, thank you.
So Marr, anything you'd like to say?
I'm excited to be here, and I do not have anything else at the moment.
Okay, I have a few announcements. One is, this kind of slipped by me, it's very important. If you filed a circuit breaker mask, when you did your mask return and you qualified for circuit breaker, you're now eligible to apply for the town circuit breaker match program. And you have up to August first to do that, so, and I'll be announcing this at town meeting, we're gonna be putting it in the paper to get the word out, and it kind of, the date slipped by me as well. But if you qualify for mass circuit breaker in your twenty twenty-four tax return, then come down with your, with your tax return. Go talk to the assessor's office and fill out an application, and you can get up to a fifty percent match on the property taxes. So start taking advantage of it right away. Again, August first. On June twelfth, the Commission on Disability, the CPAC, and the North Reading Police Department are doing a, keeping our autistic loved ones safe this summer. Autistic children have been known to lope, which means they go away from the home, and they wander especially during the warm weather. So this is directed definitely to people who might have this circumstance in their family. It's at the Flint Memorial Library from seven to eight, and it's just a safety precaution. And the police are sponsoring it because they end up being at the tail end if something goes wrong, so please come out for that. The Fourth Annual Black and Brown Owned Market is gonna be on Saturday, May thirty-first, at its Truver Park, and it's gonna go from ten to three p.m. It's sponsored by the North Reading Human Rights Group, and it's funded by the North Reading Culture Council. So it's nice to see these departments all working together to make things happen. That's been popular in the past, I think we'll have the same experience. I encourage you to go down and to support them. Last one is the LGBTQ. There is gonna be a presentation by Greater Boston PFLAG. It's from seven to eight-thirty. You can watch it online, or you can come down to the Flint Memorial Library Activity Room, and they're gonna do a watch party there. And the presentation is for anyone who wants to better understand the LGBTQ plus community. It's open to everyone, parents, grandparents, allies, students, general public. And this is again sponsored by the North Reading Human Rights Group and the North Reading Culture Council. So a lot to do over the next month. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Just a few things. One was, the Hillview Commission held a public hearing last week on proposed article that they have for the demolition of the facility there. Went on for two, two and a half hours, I know Mr. Massey was there, very informative. Several people that came there, I think their minds were changed, you know, once the presentation was made and the facts were laid out, that, you know, from an economic standpoint, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to continue on the way that we've been operating. Again, the commission made it very clear that, you know, this is just a recommendation on their part based upon the evaluation, but it's town meeting that ultimately decides what's going to happen and how they wanna move forward, and they'll move forward in whatever fashion. But as they recommended to this board, you know, at the last meeting, from an economic standpoint and from the viability of the enterprise moving forward and its ability to meet the needs of the community and help service, you know, future projects, this was the difficult decision that they came to. So again, stay tuned, there'll be another, you know, public hearing on that, June second here. One of the things that did come out of that meeting, which was very helpful and informative, was that there were some members of the community that came out and said, you know, can we at least save the main old home itself? And there's a significant amount of history associated with that particular facility. The Hillview Commission said that they would look into that, and the cost associated with retaining that, just taking the function hall facility around and saving the old whole farmhouse. But again, if you do that, you have to look at the ADA compliance stuff and what a potential future use would be. But they also recognized, you know, not every decision is a financial decision. There are some things that need to be invested in in order to retain them, you know, moving forward. So they're committed to doing that, and we look forward to, you know, making sure that, you know, we look forward to what they find out as far as what the costs associated with that. But they didn't dismiss anything, and they really appreciated the input, and they took it to heart, and they're starting to work on it already. Again, last week, we also had, went to the River Cutting, RMLD Battery Station, if you recall, last couple meetings ago, we signed a lease agreement of payment of lower taxes. Agreement, quite a facility down behind Terradyne, down at River Park, great use of the land location-wise. It works for running municipal light in order to help, again, cut costs moving forward and looking, it's very forward-thinking, and great investment for the community. It's gonna have a return for the ratepayers, it's gonna have a return for the community as a whole as far as the payment of lower taxes. And to be congratulated for the effort that they put forward and the foresight that they had in order to bring that to fruition. Again, I was gonna mention the Memorial Day Parade, you know, come Monday, come and support the parade, and hopefully the, it's gonna be good weather, good weather, and lots of applause for the Fillmores, who are going to be the grand marshals, well deserved, and good for you, you don't have to walk the route, you get a free ride, you know?
We could walk that route any day if they used the one that we used to have when we were kids.
Yeah, but no, congratulations to you and Paul, and look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you.
And celebrating, and again, for some more to wear some good shoes, you know, good walking shoes. Also liaison assignments, working on those. I apologize again for not having them ready for this evening. I'm committing to having them ready for you and to be distributed between now and the next meeting, and the next meeting, if we have votes that need to be taken, to have voting members on some of the liaison assignments, we'll do that on June second, so those will be done very shortly. And finally, I just, again, like to thank Mr. Studo for his stewardship as chair for the last few years, your heavy gavel and keeping people like myself under control. I know that you expressed some concern that if I take the gavel, no one can shut me off, and, you know, I'll try and control myself. Yeah, I'll try and control myself. But again, thank you very much for your stewardship, did a fantastic job as chair, and always looking forward to your input. Thank you, I appreciate it very much. That, anything else? Did we forget anything? How about public comment? Anybody have any public comment?
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Fillmore.
Maybe they'll vote me off being the grand marshal after tonight. Pat Fillmore, twenty-four field, Chris Harris, and two weeks ago, you had a select board meeting with the articles being brought up for the town warrant. And I had to work the election the next day, so I didn't stay up, stay here very long. But I always thought that there was some discussion after each article with the public, where they could have some input. And while I was there, there was none. So I have a couple of questions, and most of it are about the citizens petitions, okay? As I look over those citizens petitions and the town meeting from October seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, I don't see much difference in them. Maybe a couple of words have changed, you know, it's a zoning thing, but it's all the same thing. It's about the MBTA that was shot down in October. State says you can't bring up another article, that article for another two years. That's a state law, not North Reading. I just find it very hard to believe that we're bringing this up after such a majority voted against the MBTA. And again, looking at thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen from October, they're not much different than the three citizens petitions that I read. So I just am really confused as to how legally we can do that. To me, I think it's an ethical thing, okay? And again, my concern, I mean, I'm so concerned, I called the ethics board, just to be upfront. I called the ethics board, and I'm going to get an answer about it, because, A, Stephen, you're a select person. As a citizen, you, you know, turned in these petitions. I didn't think you could vote on them. I thought you had to recuse yourself. It's like anything else, if you, if somebody does something here, and it's come up to a vote, then that select person has to recuse himself. You didn't recuse yourself from that vote. And I mean, you've been a citizen for a very long time, you've been a select person for a very long time. But having turned in those petitions with your name on them, signed, I mean, not that you sponsored it, I mean, you did sponsor it. And not that you went and got the ten signatures, you know, to say, okay. If we were one of the ten votes, it would be, ten signatures, it would be one thing, but it was your petition that was put in. As a select person, how ethically can you vote on that petition? I mean, and you say, well, I think you did say at one point, because I think it was asked that night, after I went home maybe, and the comment, the answer was, well, I don't have any financial interest in it. Not necessarily, I mean, articles are voted, not everybody has, you don't have a financial interest. I don't have a financial interest, but you sponsored that petition, those three petitions, and I'm trying to figure out how it's ethically responsible. And again, maybe you don't give me an answer tonight, but the ethics board will, because I have a call.
Fair question, I guess, was brought up several times. And normally, under public comment, we don't engage back and forth, but fair enough as far as, I can assure you that the way that was handled and the way that was done, it's within the parameters of the law, so that, that's that. As far as it being almost identical to what was presented at October town meeting, absolutely true with a couple of exceptions. The two amendments that were added to the first article were substantial enough where it's not exactly the same, it can't be considered within two years. I'm just telling you what the answers are. The second, the second one is identical, so that has the two-year rule as far as whether or not that plays out, we'll find out. The planning commission has a public hearing again tomorrow night continued, and they can make a recommendation one way or the other. They happen to recommend it, then there's no issue. The third one is substantially enough because the date of the maps has changed, so that one can be considered. But, so that's the other question. And again, I'd be more than happy to talk to you offline in relation to everything else, I'll be, I'll be happy to do that, no problem.
Like I said, ethically, I think it's totally wrong, and again, two years for the same thing.
Again, we're not gonna engage back and forth, okay, but give me a buzz, you certainly have my number. Any other public comment? Mr. Mackey.
Can I just provide some information?
Sure.
So the, I think you may have been referring to the warrant article hearing, which will be on Monday, June second, so you'll get your warrant, you know, either Saturday or Friday.
Right, I mean, it was, yeah.
And again, to answer the other comment, when we vote to put on articles and make recommendations, when we sign the warrant, that's not a public decision. The public hearing comes afterwards. The public hearing and the public hearing comes afterwards. That's for deliberations of the board only, and that's what occurred that evening.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Studo. Goodbye. I got Mr. Mackey.
Kevin Mackey, Eighteen Adams Streets. Actually, I know this has been brought up before, but I am requesting that we adopt two public comments at the meetings. What you can, I'll be at the beginning and at the end. Some of these meetings go past eleven o'clock, and I know there's a few people in here at the end. It would just be nice to have a real-time conversation or a comment on some of the agenda items. Because if you have to wait two weeks to make a comment sometimes, it kind of loses its effect. And, yeah, I just think that if we could adopt that, I think that would be great, just, just, I think you need two opportunities to, you can make it just a general comment, and at the end of the night, you can at least comment on some of the agenda items.
I think, and again, I was on the board when there was no public comment. I was on the board when the public comment section was initiated and the rationale for it. Again, these meetings are open in public for the board to deliberate amongst themselves in relation to what comes before the board. As far as significant input in relation to what's before the board that evening, that's what it takes place, and it's for us to deliberate. We offer the public comment for anything, new ideas that come up, opinions that maybe want to express this action that we've taken or maybe considering. But personally, for me, to have two separate public comment sections within the agenda online, I'm not necessarily personally in favor of it, but, you know, I'll discuss it with the board members. My responsibility as chair is to work with the town administrator to establish the agenda, and I'll give it some thought and consideration. But again, I'd be happy to engage with you as to the genesis of it and how it's come about, and how it's evolved over the years. Any other public comment? Do we have anybody online? Anybody online, Mr. Gilberto?
Just had one comment asking if folks could just speak into the microphone, I guess, people have more time here.
Thank you. Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
When I was at the...
Excuse me, Mr. Dinaro, what number park street? Just for, on his purposes, what number park street are you?
Oh, what area park?
No, what's your address?
Oh, four oh two.
Thank you.
Four oh two. When we, when we were at the kiddies, when there was the meeting of the people trying to become members, members of the board, right? And I went up to you, and there were too many peoples taking cameras and everything else, so I said, can I talk to you later? So this is later. You were asking for three point nine million dollars. Is that correct at that meeting?
Three point nine million for what?
This is in relation to what, Mr. Dinaro?
For, for the sewer system, to, to reexamine the sewer system.
No, I didn't, somebody brought up, is it gonna cost us?
Well, I thought you brought it up.
No.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
What is your question, Mr. Dinaro?
Well, the question is, there were three other prior consultations with Pierce, whatever the...
Oh, Ray Pierce, I think.
Ray, Ray Pierce, and they were all over three, three million dollars. One was a, I assume, a feasibility study. The next one was to, for the pump stations they needed or something like that. And the, and the third one, I assume, was would the, would the North Reading have a, receive a dollar positive income from putting a sewer system in? And that took four or five weeks for them to come back, and they said no, and...
I'm confused.
Yeah.
The most that happened was we spent, we spent three million.
We spent two point nine million dollars of the Pulte money to do the geological surveys, it's placing as to where the, the actual pipe was gonna be laid, so we know what was under the ground, so we knew what our, our construction costs would be, would be, and that those, the money spent for that would not go for naught, because those studies, the rocks are literally not gonna move, so we know where the pipe needs to go regardless of when it's done or how it's done or what phases it's gonna be done. That two point nine million dollars was to do the geological study, the actual layout and geological studies for the layout of those, of those pipes and the pump stations. That's what it was spent for.
That was the first one, right?
So we, that was the bulk of the money.
But there was two more, three point something million dollars.
So what is it you'd like to know? What is your comment?
Well, I wanna know that we, that everything seemed to be three point something million dollars to work with Pierce right, and to work with the...
It was only one three million dollars.
Mr., again, I guess I just wanna know, what is it, what is, please wait, one second. What is it, what is your public comment? What is it you're looking to?
Well, I mean, I...
And there's no proposal, but right now, there is no proposal before town meeting for consideration of the expansion of the stewardship.
I'm happy to hear that.
So there's nothing, there's nothing on the warrant, and there's nothing for consideration?
That's the basis of my comments, is where are we going? You know, we've already been through this, and we've taken our hearts out, laid them on the table, and said, no, we don't want town sewer, it's not feasible, and...
So there is no proposal currently before town meeting for consideration? That's it. That's it.
I must be hearing things while I'm awake.
Maybe.
But, but anyway.
What are we hearing from? It's, there is no proposal. If you look at the warrant...
Okay. And now, does this fall into the thing where it's two years before you can bring it up again, too?
No, no, that's zoning.
Yeah. Do you have plans to bring it up?
I, I am unaware. There is, there is discussion, there was discussion between some members of the CPC, there's potential for wasteful treatment plants along the way, but not a full-blown tie into Andover. There's also talk about approaching Andover and potentially expanding the line into North Reading, North Main Street, to see if there's a potential for that. But again, it's all, it's all preliminary, there's nothing to be discussed at this particular point. And if it is going to be discussed, it'll be discussed here in a public session, here and at the planning commission before it comes to, before Tommy for anything.
Okay, well, sometimes I'm gonna hear things, I hear a lot, but what I don't do is...
Very good. Thank you very much.
Hold on, let me see if I had any other comment. I don't think I do. I think I won't say. Okay. Thank you. Oh, I did have another comment. I've asked the board to use your microphones, and at one point last week, we had something very important, and it was important to you and the other people here. You had your mic up close. That was the only time your mic was up close, and it was something important to you, dear and need. I see you have, you have a microphone up close, and you never did before. You have one, that's great. You have one. Sitting in the room and not being able to hear you, and I've mentioned it numerous times, I wanna hear you more than anyone, because you're the one who, who comes up with, maybe the first one to come up with the three million dollars, three point nine million, I don't know. But anyway, I wanna hear everybody, and...
Well, we're doing our best, and I try and do it, and people do complain a lot about not being able to hear me. And part of it is, you know, I just don't have it close enough to me, and part of it is, some people just have a bit of tone deafness, or whatever I have to say.
But you have to keep it close enough to you, because that's your job, and you have to support the people.
Doing the best I can, and I will make every attempt to utilize the equipment that's available.
We say best we can to people who aren't.
Best of my ability.
Yeah, who haven't graduated teenager thing, you know, all of us.
Okay, anything else, Mr.?
But can I get, can we use our microphones as?
They're right in front of us. Again, I.
I told them to someone plug it on.
Yeah, I'm serious, because it's difficult. I just went to the veterans two weeks ago, and I passed the hearing eight. That's 100%. I don't need a hearing.
Congratulations. I wish I could say the same. I just got some. Mrs. Filmer, you had one other comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to make an interjection, just in defense of what Mr. DiNaro said. At that kiddies meeting, I asked the question, you know, you're talking about Sua, and you're talking about going back to Sua and redoing the whole thing, and I said, you've already spent, yes, you did. I have it in my notes. I already said, I said, we've already spent $3.9 million, and you said, I beg to differ with you, we spent $3 million. Those were your words. And you did say that we were going, we as a town was going to go back into, looking into and doing Sua. So you did say.
I heard the same.
All right, enough. Thank you for your comments, and say again, any future discussion in relation to sewerage or package treatment plants or anything else that's going to be done, an open and public session, deliberations will be an open and public session, and any consideration for appropriations will be done in open and public session in a town meeting. So, again, there's always a difference of opinion in relation to whether or not we should move forward or just stand pat, and we'll have those discussions moving forward with lots of public input. Any other public comments? Do you want us to do this twice in a night, Mr. Mackey? Any other public comment? All set? Mr. Gilbert?
None online.
All right. Next order of business is call a special town meeting. For the public's information, over the, we've been talking about this for several months, where the board has expressed an interest in talking with Stop and Shop about the purchase of 97 Main Street. There's been some ongoing discussions back and forth in relation to that. It's seemed to kind of fall by the wayside for a while, and it's come back again rather quickly at the end of last week. So we continue to evaluate the acquisition of this particular property. The timeline associated with the need to do so is rather quickly. As I said, this has come upon us just in the last week or so, because had we known then what we know now, it would have just been a regular article on the regular June town meeting warrant. Because of the timeline associated with Stop and Shop looking to move it along, I'll continue to evaluate the acquisition of the property. We still think the June 9th town meeting is the appropriate time and place to do that, if we come to any type of conclusion with these discussions. So this provides town meeting the opportunity, if the opportunity is presented to the board, to bring it forward. We don't have anything definitive at this particular point. We don't have any deal. We don't have any idea whether or not, we have an idea that they still want to talk and engage with us, so we want to take advantage of that opportunity, so that we can present it to town meeting in a timely fashion and move forward. But again, this does not mean that we're going to do this at this particular time. It just provides us an opportunity to do so. The only mechanism to do that is to have a special town meeting within the town meeting. Not unprecedented. We've done it many times before. Basically, the way that it works is, the annual town meeting opens up at 7:00 o'clock. At 7:00 to 5:00, we recess that town meeting, go to the special town meeting, take care of whatever action needs to be taken on the special town meeting. And this would be the warrant article for the acquisition of 97 Main Street, if there's anything to talk about. If there isn't, we'll go into the special town meeting, we'll pass over the article, and adjourn that town meeting, go back to the regular town meeting. If there is something that comes to fruition between now and then, at least we'll have the opportunity to address it. So there's nothing further to report at this point, other than we're continuing to evaluate the acquisition and continue to have discussions with Stop and Shop. And as it evolves, we'll let you know. Between now and the June 9th town meeting, there will be a public hearing on June 2nd, along with all the other articles, and wherever stage we're at at that particular point, we'll let everybody know. All right, so this is just the only mechanism that we have as a community to provide town meeting with an opportunity to react to certain situations. So it's not as though there's anything definitive at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the benefit of the board members, because this is all happening pretty quickly, and for the public, I'm just going to read the article, just so they can kind of know what we're talking about. It's going to be a single article, special town meeting, the night of June 9th. Acquisition and appropriation, 97 Main Street. The article reads, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to acquire for general municipal purposes by gift, purchase, or eminent domain, and upon such terms and conditions as it deems appropriate, the land or any portion thereof, or interests therein, with all improvements, buildings, and structures located thereon, and appurtenent rights thereto, known as 97 Main Street, identified as assessor's parcel ID, MAP 24 parcel 36, and as funding, therefore, and any and all costs incidental and related thereto, to raise and appropriate, appropriate by transfer from available funds and/or borrow a sum of money, and further to authorize the select board to enter into all agreements and take all action necessary, convenient, or appropriate, to carry out such acquisition, or what it will do in relation thereto, sponsored by the select board." I believe a motion's been prepared.
Simon, you have a motion?
I do. Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the June 9th, 2025 special town meeting warrant.
Second? Yeah, a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board members? That's it? Good. Hearing now. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Get a no. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you, the constable is here. Sure appreciates us getting to it so early this evening.
I know.
After waiting for so long last time. Thank you, Doug.
So we have something to sign somewhere?
It's coming along from Mr. Massey over there. It's two copies for a statement by the board for a special town meeting at 7:05 PM on Monday, June 9th. This warrant will be mailed to all residential properties in a booklet with the spring annual town meeting, June 9th warrant as well, which is sitting with the printer this evening. It'll be printed and brought to the post office no later than Friday, to comply with the bylaw requirement that it be mailed more than 14 days ahead of the meeting. So folks should expect to receive it in the mail either Saturday or Tuesday of next week. We urge you to review it and to consider joining us at the June 2nd warrant article hearing, here in this room or via Zoom.
All right, as we're doing that, why don't we move on to the next order of business, which is appointments, Commissioner on Disability, I believe. Mr. Moore, you have a motion on.
I do.
The appointments, Commissioner on Disabilities.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination the following name for appointment of a full member to the Commission on Disabilities to expire on December 31st, 2027. Katie Molson?
Andrew.
Katie Molson. Molson. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Wallner. Mr. Wallner, you're the liaison.
Yep. So Katie came to our last meeting. She's actually related to our town moderator. She's a daughter of, and she's a perfect fit for what we're looking for. Gina Moran, who's our chair, agrees that this is a good choice for our Commission on Disabilities, so I strongly recommend the board approve her.
Again, normally, this is a roll call vote. There's only one. So why don't we go to a roll call vote, and you have to name the person?
Mr. Chairman, a quick question. Is, did we, did we post this in the newspaper, and did we get any other individuals interested in taking these positions?
Nope. If there were other things, they would have been listed.
Did we post them in the paper?
It was posted with all the other points, a couple of months ago.
Oh, okay.
It was all posted a couple of months ago, so this is the only applicant at this particular firm time.
Thank you.
Chair, please, I'm happy to give it a thumbs up.
Mr. Massey?
So on the motion, Mr. Massey?
Katie Molson.
Mr. Studo?
Katie Molson.
Mr. Wallner?
Katie Molson.
And the chair votes Katie Molson.
Thank you.
And we appreciate her stepping forward. And we have one for Youth Services Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination the following name for appointments as full member to the Youth Services Committee to expire December 31st, 2027. Ann Chambers.
Just a second. Mr. Wallner?
Yep, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Wallner?
Yep, and again, she's already appeared in front of the Youth Services Committee. Her resume is, I have retired from North Reading High School, Administration Assistant, Guidance Office, and she can be available seven hours, several hours during the week. A good fit. They interviewed her, and everybody's on board. So again, good recommendation. That's the only way to come forward.
Any further discussion? Hearing then, roll call vote. Mr. Massey?
Ann Chambers.
Mr. Studo?
Ann Chambers.
Mr. Moore?
Ann Chambers.
Mr. Wallner?
Ann Chambers.
And the chairs, Ann Chambers. Thank you. Thank you very much. And record time, one more motion. Oh, excuse me. New meeting dates. Look at the motions here. Okay. New meeting dates.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you, our next meeting would be Monday, June 2nd, so that's two weeks from tonight. Again, the warrant article informational hearing we held that evening. And then by board policy, the following, the next meeting, regular meeting, would be Monday, June 16th. So that would be the first and third Mondays. In between, on Monday, June 2nd, June 9th, excuse me, Monday, June 9th is the town meeting, so the board will be probably before town meeting that night. So upcoming meetings, June 2nd, 9th, and 16th. And then again, if we were to follow board policy, the meetings in July would be the 7th and the 21st, and in August, they would be the 4th and the 18th. I will just note that it will likely be difficult for me to prepare a meeting packet leading up to the 7th, because of the holiday that week. So I don't know if we want to consider making an adjustment to the schedule or not. Otherwise, we can prepare a packet that will just be well in advance of the meeting at that point.
And again, everybody, you know, if you know your vacation schedule, and it's difficult, we'll do the best we can to accommodate, make sure that everybody can be present, but sometimes that just doesn't work out. And Mr. Studo?
Everybody if I'm wrong, for the last couple of years, didn't we do, didn't we just schedule one meeting for July and August, and then revisit it if we had to actually have one? I don't think we put two.
We did, yes.
I don't know if that's something.
Do we want to pencil it in?
Mr. Chair? Well, what we did is, we were just, we didn't even.
Didn't even pencil it in?
Did we even pencil it in? No, I don't even think we penciled it in.
I think on that, if there was a need for us to be.
We added it in.
The chair would contact everybody, and the administrator would contact everybody and say, listen, this has come up. We need to act. Can we get a quorum? So the pleasure of the board is in relation to, we're talking about just one in July and one in August, and then as needed.
If we were to do that, my suggestion would be, you know, maybe use Monday, July 14th, and Monday, August 18th. The 14th would be the second Monday, but it would also give us, you know, more likely we'd have some business that would have accumulated from the end of June into July. And then the August date happens to be the deadline for the submission of warrant articles for the fall annual town meeting, being the third Monday. So that might be a good night, too. So it's something to think about. We can revisit it the next meeting as well, if folks want to check their calendars at home.
So August would stay the same?
August would be the third meet, the third Monday, but would not necessarily need to be the first.
The third would be the 18th.
The 18th, yeah.
And then July would be the 14th.
Yeah, July 14th, August 18th.
That I'm not, I'm out of the country.
The 18th?
We'll call you.
I'm gone. I can't. That single, that single, then.
This is his normal go, bake himself in Sicily.
He's going to.
No, no, not really this year. My wife, you know, power, because my two-year-old did not have a good flight home last time, so we have to wait a year.
So we have to. Oh, you think yours is going to solve that problem?
One way or the other, I'm missing two years on the military, and so it's a result. So, yes, but so July 14th.
You cannot do the 14th?
No.
We certainly could do the 21st as well. Again, revisit it the next meeting, too.
So we're talking about July. 21st? Is that better? Mr. Studo?
Much longer.
The 21st?
Yeah.
Anybody else know what your schedule is yet as far as vacations? I haven't been told by my social director yet, so.
Pretty much, yeah. The 21st works.
Right now, just tentatively. So obviously, June 2nd, we have that scheduled, the 9th is town meeting, 16th for June. For July, we're talking, which one, the 21st?
21st.
So the 21. Worked the majority right now, and again, let us know in the next meeting. 21st, so I say tentatively, the 21st. And then August, talking the 18th for sure.
That's what I was suggesting, yeah.
So far? Yep. Cenzo, your schedule looks good for the 18th of August?
18th of August, right here. Knee-deep in football. We can't go anywhere.
All right. So that's what we'll set up. And again, as things move along, if there's a need for the board to have a meeting, we'll go through this, and we'll turn over these things down. All right? There we go. Is that a sign? No.
No, because I brought it down, Virginia.
Say hello. All right. Hold on to business. Anybody? Mr. Studo?
I haven't seen it separate before, ever.
You know where we said it at, yeah. You know where we put it in, with the board member reports.
Yeah, no, so.
Mr. Massey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to bring the rest of the board up to date in public, I have put an inquiry into purchase some land in town that's owned by the town. I have filed all the necessary paperwork, and I have, it's just a budding property to my residence. It's very, very small, but that is in the hands of the board and the town administrator. So when that comes, I will talk more about that. Thank you.
Any new business? Never been the old business like us. New business, sorry. We're still on. There's a lot of data to it. Town administrators report.
We have no report this evening.
Thank you very much. Yeah, there's one more motion. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
He did this on purpose, make him look sound good.
This is after I made all those accolades to the House. You have a motion and a second. Any discussion or motion to adjourn, I know you don't want to go outside. Hearing now. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Get a no. Thank you very much.
You know, it's like, you see? It wasn't me making the meeting.